Okay. It is five o'clock. We're almost there. Based upon my message. Okay, we are currently live. It is 5:01 PM. I'd like to now call to order the May 18th, 2020 Board Meeting of the Belton Independent School Board of Trustees. A quorum of board members is present. We are meeting this evening under authority of Texas Government Code Section 551.045, and with the authority of the Governor's Office via video conference to advance the public health goal of limiting face-to-face meetings to slow the spread of coronavirus, COVID-19. I'd like to thank our administration and technology staff for making the technology possible for the board to meet in this manner. This meeting is being livestreamed on the board's YouTube channel and recorded. The recording will be made available to the public. Additionally, members of the public who seek to exercise their right under state law to address the board on an item on the agenda for tonight's meeting have the ability to do so in the manner listed on the notice for this meeting. Please join me for a moment of silence and/or meditation, and then we will go into pledges. Please remain seated as we state the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is going to be public comments. As I noted a moment ago, to comment on an item for today's agenda, members of the public were instructed to submit their comments to be read into record. Elizabeth, would you please read any comments that were received from members of the public?
There were no comments submitted.
Thank you, Elizabeth. So, our next wonderful item on the board is to administer oath of office to board members Janet Lee and Ty Taggart. Congratulations, guys. Ms. Connie, I would turn this over to you.
Thank you, Madam President. Ty and Janet, if you would unmute your mics, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Where I state my name, please insert your name. I, Connie Burns.
I, Janet Lee.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of School Board Trustee.
Of the Office of School Board Trustee.
For the Belton Independent School District.
For the Belton Independent School District.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations to you both. Thank you.
Congratulations, guys. So glad you're here. Awesome. Would either of you like to have a word? Janet?
No, it's, you know, it's been an eventful three years, hasn't it? Ty Taggart. And we, you know, we've covered just about everything a school board trustees can cover in our first three years and our first term on this board. And, you know, Ty and I are thinking, well, you know, what else can there be? But I think there, I think that there could be more. So we're ready for it. We're up for the task, and we're so blessed and grateful. And I'm just so honored to be here, and I love this school district with my whole heart, and I love our families, and I love our community, and I cannot wait to just keep going. Thank y'all.
Awesome. Thank you, Janet. Ty?
Well, I have to echo Janet's sentiments that it's been an eventful three years, especially the last year, for sure. I love this district. I love our community. And I really do like what we have going in Belton ISD. I'm proud to be a part of it. I'm eager for some more stable times to come around and kind of be able to enjoy some of the hard work that we've put into this thing, but I think that's just part of it. But I'm always honored to be a part of this board and this way to serve our community and the legacies of some of those that came before us. So I'm just proud to be with you guys.
Thank you. So glad you're still here. This is awesome. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is something that's done historically every May after an election, although, you know, this was kind of different. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor for nominations for the organization of the board.
If I could, I would like to make the recommendation or the nomination that we keep everything as it is for the next year. I think having that stability in place, it'd be vital for our success at this time.
So for the record, would you state what the way it is currently so that we can have that?
Suzanne McDonald, I got that right, for President. Jeffrey Norwood as our Vice President, and Janet Lee as our Secretary.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Flor. All in favor, please raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Okay, so we're going to move on over to our next item, which is to consider discussing, take appropriate action regarding appointment of board committees. Just giving you a little bit of background about that. The board committees serve in an advisory capacity to the Board of Trustees and allow trustees the opportunity to discuss agenda items in more detail. In September of 2019, thank you very much, Dr. Robin Batterhill, the board determined that having a policy committee and a facilities committee would be beneficial to the district, as they were, there were ongoing projects and policies that impacted those facilities as well. These two committees greatly expedite communication between the board and staff on matters that require detailed attention. So at this point, for a policy committee that consists of Chair Manuel Akosar, we've got Dr. Rosie Montgomery on that board, on that committee, and Chris Flor. And Facilities Committee, our Chair is Ty Taggart, and we have Janet Lee and Jeff Norwood. At this time, I would open up the floor for discussion for and/or just a motion to keep things as they currently are with those particular members in those particular areas, or if you all would like to switch up, let's have that discussion now if you'd like.
I'll make a motion. We keep everybody on their current committees and current structures.
Is there a second?
Were we having discussion? Still having discussion? Yeah, I just think that, you know, we haven't had, we haven't been in our committees even a year yet. I don't even know if it's been six months, maybe, maybe. But anyway, I just feel like, you know, it's probably best to keep going on exactly where we are right now for some continuity, and it's been really good.
Any other discussion?
I would agree with those comments.
Okay, so Mr. Norwood made a motion. Is there a second? Will that be coming from Ms. Lee? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. That passes. We will remain as we currently are. So we will now move into our board workshop, and Mr. Todd Schiller is going to talk to us about compensation survey and health insurance rates. Mr. Schiller.
Thank you very much. Well, good evening, everyone. Tonight is our annual review of our compensation survey and health insurance rates. We've collected the information, compiled it into the survey that you have in your packets. It is shown on the screen here. And as a reminder, the survey is a comparison of salary ranges, key positions like your teachers, administrative staff, professionals, paraprofessionals, and auxiliary staff. Our comparison group is with Temple, Coppersco, Georgetown, Colleen, Midway, and Wakefield. And as you know, Jennifer presented a budget workshop a couple of weeks ago, and we have been working closely with Jennifer to determine a proposal for salary increase. We plan to present a proposal for salary increases during next month's June board meeting. As we review this survey tonight, I will point out areas that we need to focus on and hope to include in our proposal next month for salary increases. And with that being said, next slide, let's jump into the survey. When you look at our teacher salary comparison, we broke it down by experience category. Zero, five years, 10 years, 15 and 20 years. When you look at the pay across those districts, we're within the top three, each one of those experience category. At zero years, we're about, at zero years, we're about $100 from highest paid salary. It grows a little bit at five years, we're $250 from the highest paid salary. Then at 10 and 15 years, it spreads up a little bit, $1,250 from the highest paid salary at 10 years, $1,225 at 15. And then at 20 years, we're leading, we're leading by about $300. That's in terms of the highest paid salaries across the system. When you look at our salaries being paid and you compare it to the average of the other districts, we're in fairly good shape when you do that. We're almost $1,800 above the zero-year mark, and then it falls down at 15 years to about $630. Overall, our teacher salary are pretty competitive and pretty strong. And this has contributed a large part to the household free funds that we receive. Next slide. So when we start looking at our administrators and professionals and paraprofessionals and auxiliary employees, we really focus on what we call the market. And we calculate that market median in regards to the salary range, so the minimum and maximum of the salary range, as well as the average pay with actual people within those positions across. And we, the market median is located at the bottom of each of these position categories, bottom row. And it describes how competitive our salary. Higher the market median percentage increase translates to a greater ability to attract and retain quality. Most of our salary ranges are these principles, and this is, look at the ranges, we're within the 90s. In some regards, we're at 100%, a little bit above 100. And the higher the market median, and the better our ability to attract and retain. Our focus, though, needs to be on the high school principals and elementary principals. You look at those position categories, we're looking at them in terms of that average pay in the market median. So that's going to be a focus of ours as we. Next slide. Now, we'll add, when we talk about administrative and professional employees, I mean, this market comparison looks at local districts. But we also need to be thinking about competing at the $12,000 to $17,000 minimum. So that's going to be a focus for us as we continue. I can tell you, those salaries in the $12,000 to $17,000 minimum are higher than what you see represented here. We're even further behind. Look at those markets. When you look at our professionals, we're diagnosticians, high school counselors, LSSP therapists. Our market medians of this local market look pretty good. We're right around, you know, 100, 103% in some of these categories when you look at the minimum and maximum. However, the LSSPs is a huge concern for us. You see the market median there, it's slipped down about 91%, lost some ground this year. And when I see that market median percentage, look at it, see that experience level may be an issue for those LSSP staff. Fewer, our employees may be less experienced in what you see in the other. But we've got to figure out a plan to be able to attract and retain experience level classes. And so that's going to be a focus for us to do. And I will tell you, that's going to be difficult, because there's, number one, there's a shortage of LSSPs now. And then number two, some of these LSSPs go to work for contract companies, and they're working for these contract companies. Their hourly rate is twice the pay. So that's a challenge, but we're up for the challenge, and we're going to try to figure out a plan.
Clarifying question real quick, just on the median market. Can you just tell us a little bit of history about what you've been comfortable with in the past and what you're not comfortable with? You said one example there, but I just, I want to clarify for our board and for our listeners what we're looking at there.
Yeah, so you know, the market median, that's the middle number of this comparison. It's how close you are to that middle number. So in the past, we've always kind of focused on the 90%. When we fall below 90%, in that we take a look at position adjustments in those types. We never want to be below 90%. That's something that we need to be cognizant of. 90% is the mark, but as we continue to grow, I think our focus needs to be closer towards the bottom. We've got to be able to attract and retain staff in this comparison group, as well as the larger, over the $17,000 minimum. Next slide. So paraprofessional and auxiliary staff. If you recall last year, we had two seasons. This continues to be a focus, and I mean specifically. We have got to be better on our paraprofessional and auxiliary staff. We know that. When you look through here, I will remind you that we're one of the few districts that actually contribute to social security and TRS, or paraprofessional. Which is a good thing for retirement purposes. The other side of that is that results in less take-home pay for this group of employees. So you could have people in this, in these positions making the same hourly rate in our district as another district, but being able to take home more in another district versus ours because of the function region. That's a huge concern for us. We look at these market median groups, and you can see a lot of these, we're needing some help. We're at the low 90s, upper 80s in some. And then in some regard, in some positions, do actually get to the 100, 103% area like we have the payroll clerks. But this, this needs to be a focus for us. Our staff need this. And it's, you've got a lot of work to do in these positions. All of this is a comparison of other districts and similar types of positions. A lot of these positions are available in private sector, types of people, private jobs in private. Which we got to be cognizant of. Well, and one of the thing to also remember too is these positions, several of them, especially when you talk about the educational aides and teacher aides and special ed aides, those are 187 a day position. They get paid over 12 months. So it's not the, their pay gets divided out over 12 months, so it's kind of parate. And so what you'll see in private sector is you'll, they'll get paid every two weeks for actual unemployment. Ours gets divided over 12 months, you know, to pay them. We've got to focus on this particular area. Now, I'll tell you, in terms of attracting and retaining staff in this area, been a little bit of a concern, especially the pre-COVID area when the economy was calm, a lot of individuals had permanent full-time jobs. But I do think our pool's going to come around with these positions as well, due to the, due to the term that we've been experiencing with the economy. I think our applicant pool's going to grow in these positions, but we need to do what we can to focus on pay for the paraprofessional.
Todd, can you, your voice cut out just a little bit earlier. I just want to reiterate the point. I think you'd mentioned the point that these positions that are on this slide also pay into social security, which not every district does. And so not only are we talking about a comparison with these other districts, but they have to contribute a certain percentage as well, which other districts do not.
Right. And that is correct. It's close to 7% that those employees would have to contribute. So really, you know, I know we've said the 90% one, but when you really think about that, we really need to be at 100% or above in these types. That's going to be a focus for us to be able to address as we continue to.
Thank you.
Next slide. Auxiliary pay, it's pretty much the same story as the paraprofessionals. Again, they're contributing to social security. It's about 7%, 0.75%. And so we need to, this needs to also, again, need to be. As you can see, we're slipping a little bit with the food service areas, food service workers. And that's tough, because when you think about those positions in the private sector, it's really difficult to be. You can go to Buc-Ee's and get gas, and you see hourly rate ranges from $14 to $20 an hour as you're filling up on a sign. So this is a big concern for us. A lot of the fast food places are paying more than that too. So this is definitely something that needs to be. Next slide. For our last position that we'll talk about is substitutes. Last year, if you remember, we approved some rate increases for substitutes. We had a little stipend incentive for substitutes who worked 70% of the semester. And that's worked out well. That being said, the pre-COVID area when the economy was strong, substitutes were hard to come. And it wasn't just us, it was every district around. So it's been very difficult pre-COVID to attract, to attract substitutes. Pool was very, very low. That being said, again, I think, once we get back this fall, I think we're going to see a turn with the applicants there because of the state of the economy. I'm going to look back around again. I don't project along, I don't project an issue with hiring substitutes. And I think our rate through are pretty, are surrounding areas. Next slide. Our, into the health insurance, our contribution for health insurance is $400 a month, it's $4,800 for the year. And when you look across other districts, it's pretty comparable where other districts are, and their average of other districts is about $395, or about $5. Continue to look at maintaining that contribution. Next slide. TRS, so I'll tell you, this has been a challenging year for TRS Active Care. Taking a lot of time to get information from TRS Active Care in terms of, and information that they have. And we're still waiting on a lot of plan details to be, in terms of plan summary documents. What some of these are going to actually come. I will tell you, as you remember, when we went into TRS Active Care, once you're in, there's no way out. You do not have choices in plans being offered, or influence and plans being offered, or the premium amounts being offered as well. Kind of stuck with whatever TRS.
Hey, Todd? Todd?
Yes.
I thought that I read somewhere, because TRS is, TRS is out of money. They can't fund their claims. It's not a big secret. I thought that TRS was offering larger districts the chance to get back out again.
There is a lot of discussion about that, and I've sat in through different conferences and work sessions with TRS Active Care and various other districts this. There is an option where you can write it into your distributive elevation plan and be able to choose a plan to offer along with the TRS Act. Now, that being said, I've been trying to get our claims data for TRS Active Care, six months to seven months. We're not releasing, last week, we finally got an email about a process to be able to get your claims data. So without that claims data, though, and I don't have it yet, without that claims data, I think we're going to find it hard to go out for a proposal of minutes rather than showing premium rates for us, not the claims history. But that is something that, if we can get this claims data, I will definitely look at putting up a plan to be able to offer in conjunction with this. I know, I know there's been a couple of additions. I think El Paso ISD has done it. Maybe Mansfield ISD, if I remember right. But I'm only aware of about a couple of dishes that actually have posted a plan in conjunction with TRS. Big question, Jeff. Thanks. So when you look at these health insurance rates, and this is an updated document. So I think what you had in your packet, an update in these premium rates as they come out. And that employee cost has changed a little bit on the speedrun this. And this represents the $400 contribution that we have. So when you look at this TRS Active Care information, it is changing. They moved from Etna to Ucrusbeesh, Ucrusbeesh. And I've tried to match up similar plans to what was previously offered. I mean, I did the best to do that, and TRS Active Care had some, had some information about which plans match up best to what's previously offered. And so when you look at that employee-only coverage for the hot-deductible plan, you've got about 30, 36% employees are on that plan, 1,248. And that's still going to continue to be a free plan that's offered. Employee-only, that's all that I have. If you look down, you can see some decreases and you can see some increases. There is a new plan, and it's called this Active Care Primary Plan. There's no good plan to compare it to from what was previously offered. And that's the plan that's right in the center there. And so there's, not sure how that's going to end up. We're still waiting on more plan detail information from that particular plan. I can tell you, there's only one plan on this, on this page that offers a true out-of-network. And that's that hot-deductible. When you think about, in time, I've had these kinds of. When you think about people going out, kids going to school, those types of things, that's going to be an issue for some people. There's not an out-of-network kind of. Some of these have statewide coverage, and that's what I'm understanding from these primary coverage, primary plans that are being offered. But in terms of out-of-network in other states, there's really only one plan that's going to be able to do that. Other plans may have emergency care services, and if it's deemed an emergency, there is emergency care that's represented in that. In terms of, you got a cold, you need to go get treatment for that cold, you're out of state, there's not really out-of-network. And we're going to do our best to try to communicate that for our employees that it's clear and understands the in-network, out-of-network information with each one of these. So anyway, when you go back and you look at these premium rate increases, the hot-deductible plan, pretty minimal increases, the biggest one coming on an employee's spouse coverage increased $54. Move down the chart, these are decreases with this, what was called the former Active Care Select Plan, which is now the Active Care Primary Plus Plan. And you see about a 7%. 7% decrease. So that's good news. And the Scott White Plan, actually, the employee, employee-only coverage decreased. That's good news. You see some minimal increases with employee child, employee family, and a little bit of bigger increase with employees' spouse. Scott White still makes up about 50% of our participants on this particular plan. Overall, the rates compared to what I've seen over previous years, it's relatively, it's pretty good. I will tell you, from my meetings with TRS Active Care, their whole goal is everybody that's hot-deductible. That's the, the main difference with that hot-deductible plan is you pay as you go. You pay, there's no co-pays. We pay until you reach your out-of-pocket, until you reach your deductible amounts, and then you start receiving discounted rates, you pay 20% of the, of the cost of that. The Active Care Primary Plus Plan, the reason why its premium amounts are lower is mainly because of that, that out-of-network. When you compare that, that, that Active Care Primary Plus Plan to the Active Care 1H/2 Plan, Primary Plus Plan doesn't offer an out-of-network, so that's why you're seeing this. Next slide. So I'd like to move away from the survey here for a second, and just telling you all, thank you for your efforts and approving the January incentives that we approved, you all approved in January. The hiring incentives have worked. You all approved in January $2,500 hiring incentive for teachers hired by May the 1st. We've hired 113 teachers. We've hired nine teachers with the $3,000 hiring. We've hired nine teachers with the three thousand dollar hiring incentive for Southwest and More Heights. I don't ever recall hiring one hundred and twenty-two teachers. So thank you all. Thank you to Calvines. Thank you to the principals for making this a priority. And thank you. Next slide. Just a reminder, the retention incentive for Southwest and More Heights, that will be something that will still move forward. And those incentives that we talked about on the previous slide, they'll be paid out in August, as well as these retention incentives. So everybody who returns out of Southwest and More Heights, class should teach better people records. And they're going to receive that three thousand dollar incentive. Next slide. Finally, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about, this is part of, it's called the teacher incentive allotment. And this came from House Bill Three. We have signed up with DEA as being a cohort D participant. I think Dr. Batter Sheldon had previously mentioned this in the September month's update, several months back. Signing up as a participant does not commit us to participating. Teacher incentive allotment is basically a pay for performance. And that was designated on House Bill Three. The plan focused on developing a system to where teachers are evaluated in the three categories, but it's based on their minimum of teacher observation and student growth. Ninety percent of the funds that they would receive, making it to one of those three categories, is paid towards compensation for the campus or the location that's under. We have a lot of reservations of implementing and of this feature. In particular, about the funding, how it will continue, given our current situation. Also, I add, but that being said, I don't want to be left behind with this. Because if other districts do this, we need to be, we need, we need to, what our interest level is and all. One thing to remember about this is that if other districts do this, and they have a teacher's qualify underneath their plan, those dollars that they receive in terms of this pay for performance moves with them to other districts if they're hired. This existed in Blaine or Austin, and we ended up hiring an individual from that area that was receiving these funds. We need to have some type of plan in place to be able to handle those funds, is what we're going to do. That being said, this next fall, we're going to hold sessions with purpose group sessions. Have them weigh in and get thoughts from teachers on what they would like to see. These are strictly exploratory session. Just for us to explore, see, and see what the interest level is, and see how we might be able to develop a plan. If a decision is made to move forward with the teacher incentive allotment plan, we'll definitely bring that back to the board with those of what that plan would be like. Then we would also have to slide to DEA. This is very different from what we've been accustomed to. See. With that, this concludes my presentation, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Todd. Does board have any questions?
Yeah, Todd, I have a quick question regarding substitutes. I've often wondered, because I've always thought that, but I don't know the age, I don't know the minimum age of being a substitute, that some of our college students for, you know, in certain degrees, or even our graduate students would be excellent candidates to recruit for substitute teaching because it's such a flexible work schedule. And they might, it might be a great part-time job that works around class schedules. So I don't know if you guys have considered that, and also I don't know the minimum age.
Yep. So we've had some, some, some college individuals working for us in the past. Most of them are pursuing degrees in education and teaching. So we've, we have done that in the past. But that's something we can, we can, we can grow and look at for sure.
And, and what was the minimum age?
Well, so maybe, so, so here's, here's my concern with, you've got to be thinking about the group that they're teaching. In terms, so eighteen would be the minimum age. So if you're eighteen years of old, years age, you can be in those, you can be in those classes. We just need to be thoughtful, group to kids.
Hey Todd, I have a question.
Yeah?
So going back to the salaries or the, the pay of our hourly employees, the different categories that we have, I noticed that you'd said several times that we needed to work on those categories because of the competition. But then again, that was three months ago, economy, you know, three percent unemployment versus today. Obviously, things are going to take a while to filter back out. But what percentage increase would you like to see that increase? And if so, can we crunch those numbers to see what it would cost monthly and yearly at that increase to see what the feasibility of affording those increases would be?
Yeah, so it's going to take us several, I think, salary increases to be at the level that we want to be at. We've been talking with Jennifer a little bit. I think my hope, I hate to put out numbers without getting them formed up through the budget process. But we are looking at doing potentially higher salary increases for that group of members compared to the. In terms of salary, you know, I think, I think you could go to, I think you could go to eight to ten percent, and you would just be barely getting to where, slightly where you need to be. Because again, you've got the Buc-E's out there that's paying four fifty, forty-two dollars an hour, and that's it. You know, when you think about some of our educational aides, a good one, I mean, they're right underneath ten dollars an hour. And it's, it's going to take a while to that kind of level. Very deserving of it, no doubt about it.
Madam President, if I may, wait, and a couple of things real quick. I wanted to point out, going with Ty's question just a minute ago, about these specific employee groups in pay. I do think Todd's point earlier is one that we really need to talk about is the school district, and that is, who is our comparison group? When you take a look at that group that we are comparing ourselves to, there is one district that is similar to us and all of that, and that is Georgetown ISD. The other districts vary greatly from us. And I think that we need to take a look at who we're comparing ourselves to, particularly in an era of an increased concern for jobs and people's, just frankly, willingness to commute to a higher dollar amount in another district. And I think we really need to take a hard look at the, the school districts that Todd mentioned, from twelve to seventeen thousand, and really take a look at what, who our comparison group is, first of all. The other factor in that, that I, that Todd mentioned and I brought up, is that we pay into social security here. And so when we talk about being at ninety-one percent of the market, meaning that the majority of those districts in our comparison are higher than us there, then we are in a, in a situation where we are below the, the ballgame already. But then you take another percentage decrease because we're paying into social security and the other districts are not. So I think we're going to, we need to have some really good discussions about who, who our comparison group is, and how we make a strategic plan moving forward to invest over multiple years to make sure all employee groups are paid well, so that we can attract and keep. And I say keep, meaning that, and keep the best talent possible. Because I do worry about this economy and the impact of the dollar on families. And if you can drive down the road and you don't have to pay into social security, and they're already paying a dollar or two more an hour, that's a big deal for some families. And we have to be cognizant of that. The last thing I want to mention real quickly is Todd's last slide on the teacher incentive allotment. And I want to be really frank on that one. We are very thankful for House Bill Three and the monies that came into school districts because of House Bill Three. One thing that I don't think our communities know well is that a lot of the monies that came in were either a, there are some specific strings attached. And I will mention one of them right now is, we got additional money, but we also got additional mandates, like reading academies, that we have to put all of our teachers through and pay them for, and provide coaching for, and things like that. This teacher incentive allotment is one of those items that is out there. I don't want to take any discussion off the table where we have the opportunity to talk about paying our teachers more. Because we know, especially in this era, that they all deserve as much as we can possibly ever pay them. But I also worry about what an incentive allotment does. And we have seen it gone really wrong in other districts. And there is a lot to investigate in that. I am not a fan of ranking teachers by state test scores on the STAR test. And that is exactly what this proposal does. And so I just need to be really forthcoming with my concerns about this. Are we willing to explore things? And am I willing to explore things? Absolutely. But we go into this discussion with a lot of reservations because of the consequences that it could have on a system and on our kids ultimately.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, for those remarks. Any other discussion?
Yeah, this is Chris, if you could. So I'm going to ask a couple of questions, and maybe these are a little unfair. Todd, I wish I, I didn't necessarily realize what the market median percentage numbers were when I was going through this this weekend. So, so if we, if we look specifically, the, like, the special ed aides and the teacher aides, you know, kind of where those, you know, so those are some of the lowest market median percentages in the whole lot, right? What does our turnover look like in those areas? Is that something that offers?
So when you look at those, when you look at those paraprofessional areas in terms of the educational age, you're looking at closer to a thirty percent turnover at those positions. And it's the same thing for auxiliary staff, food service worker, bus drivers, those types. Bus drivers has been a little bit better this year in terms of our salary increase.
Okay. So, so when that turnover occurs, is that turnover that occurs here? Or does it occur at the end of the year? How, are they?
No, no, it occurs all throughout the.
Yeah, okay. And so, and so that, oh, go ahead. Yeah, all right. So to me, right, I mean, that, that shines even a brighter light on this particular area. Because I think the way that we take care of the folks that, that take care of our teachers, that support our teachers, also has an impact on the turnover rate for our teachers, right? And it's about the level of support, you know, in the classroom during the day, in the environment that our teachers, right? I think it's all linked together. And so, you know, I mean, I think it's right on to, to single those out. When it comes to the health insurance, is it possible to look at paying a, a higher BISD share for specific groups? And what I mean is, you know, could we actually say, maybe, you know, if we're paying in four hundred dollars an hour right now, could we say, hey, look, plus children, we might pay four twenty-five instead of four hundred? And, and, and like, do we have the ability to get down to that level when, when we make some of those decisions, or no?
Yeah, so I, I've thought about that. And I'm actually looking at this point, maybe trying to offer a greater, greater contribution to the paraprofessional auxiliary staff. Because those are the ones I'm really worried about. Because a lot of those, in my opinion, for health insurance and some of those.
Right.
That's something I'm looking at. I do need to look at the legalities surrounding that. I don't off the top of my head foresee any issues with that, but that's, that's something that's on my, on my radar.
Let me, I, I can, I can sit in here and answer those questions. Yeah, so start with the, the reason that most businesses have gone to a set amount. And, and they don't like to usually, well, for several different reasons. When you set an amount, say, for a hundred dollars per month per employee, from a budget standpoint, it makes it very easy. You know what you're doing. And if you're going to make increases anywhere, you want to do it with that number. Most employers have gotten away from contributing to, you know, employee spouse will pay this, employee this, will pay that. There's some big corporations, obviously, that do. Most in Texas, they don't do that anymore because it became a budgetary nightmare. And there started being cost shifting going on. So what you had is, you know, what the numbers we see are not really real. They put all those numbers in a hat, and then they kind of dispense them into the employee only, employee spouse. I was looking over them, and what they've done, the markets actively manipulate a little bit. When they want more children on a plan, they'll artificially lower that rate, but then they'll kick up the spouse rate to make up the difference. They're just trying to get a unit cost per head all the time. As far as just paying different amounts for different classes of employees, it is very much frowned upon by TDI for you to do that. There are people out there who do it, but as a broker, I won't let my clients do it. Because I can't back that up if they ever get audited. TDI is very clear on that. What we used to have is, we had one, we had a rate that was paid for our, you know, our management. And then another group paid here, and another group paid here, and that was the way we tiered it down. That's been gone for like fifteen years. And every now and then, I'll still walk into a company and they tell me they're doing that, and I just turn around and walk out because I don't want to be there when they get in trouble. Because you will get in trouble for that eventually. So.
All right, so the recommendation, Jeff, would be if we were to make a change, really be across the court at four hundred?
Yeah, that was, that's where you would do it. You would want to say, I mean, and here's the deal, there's, there's actually a legitimate reason. And there have been some court cases. If you're going to pay me four hundred, but then you're going to pay Ty four hundred and fifty because he puts a kid on there, I actually have a good case for discrimination at that point. That you are contributing more in his name than you are in my name, and that is discriminatory as far as the state of Texas is concerned.
Yeah.
And it's easy to budget. Because if you start messing with the, I'm going to pay more for spouse, well, then you may end up with a bunch of spouses that you didn't know about coming on the plan because it makes more sense to the employee, and that makes the budgetary for Jennifer a nightmare. Right now, she's going to do it like every business does. She can sit down and say, within reason, this is how many employees we're going to have on the group. This is what we're going to pay per month. This takes it right down to the bottom line, and she's going to be pretty close.
Gotcha. All right, thanks, Jeff.
Great discussion. Anyone else? If not, Mr. Schiller, again, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you all.
We'll next hear from our very own Manuel Alcozer. He'll give us a committee report on policy.
Thank you, Madam President. In our last meeting, we essentially talked about four areas in our, in our policies. One was FNF Reg, which deals with our drug testing policy. We also dealt with AE Legal and BAA Legal and BA Local. The FNF Reg was a draft that was presented to us by, by Coach Morgan, who did, he did a fine job in presenting that to us, which is our drug testing policy. And I think that we've had that policy in place since two thousand and nine, I believe. Anyway, the, the purpose of that policy is, is a deterrent, trying to keep kids away from, from nicotine drugs and alcohol. There is, there is a punitive element to the policy in that, you know, if you get, you got the first offense, the second offense, and the third offense, and there's different things that can happen to a student along the way. It is a, it is a random drug testing policy. I believe that he indicated to us that about fifty students a month are tested. And the good news is that I think that we're not having a whole lot of a problem with, with kids. I mean, kids are fairly compliant with things. And we're not having much of a problem with second offenders as well, which obviously is a good thing. There is a fairly comprehensive notice provision contained in the policy. In other words, we want to get, get parents to, to know that this, this thing is there, that if a student is going to participate in extracurricular activities and they get caught doing something, that there are ramifications for that. I, I did say it's, it's a little bit punitive in nature, but not necessarily. I mean, the, the idea is to educate students and, and keep them away from those things, although it can be a problem. Now, understand that although there is a punitive element to it, it doesn't supersede our student code of conduct. In other words, that, that's a whole different animal as, as compared to, to the drug testing policy that we have in place. Another important thing is that, that it's not used as a. no, it's not going to affect the kid's grades, all right? These things are completely confidential. Those records are destroyed by the district once a kid leaves the school. I did ask Coach Morgan about what the, the drug testing company does with their results. And I, I think that the idea is going to be that they also destroy those results because we don't want those things getting out. Rosie did ask an interesting question, although it might have been Chris, but I think it was Rosie, about what happens if you have a kid at this district that, that has a positive finding on a drug test? What happens when they go and play football at another, at another district? But Coach Morgan said that, well, the way that's taken care of is under the UIL rules, the kid has to disclose that on one of these forums, so they, they can't get away with that. So even though the records are destroyed here and they're not shared outside of our district, the kid can't go somewhere else and participate in sports and expect, expect not, that information not to be disclosed because it will be disclosed because they're required to do that based upon the UL transfer form. I think that's, that's pretty much, that's pretty much it. There wasn't, there wasn't anything else that was of any, any significance. The main thing is obviously we're, we're doing everything we can to notify parents at the beginning of the year. They sign the consent forms, okay? So kids, kids know about it, kids know that, that if they get, they get caught the first time, the second time and the third time, what the ramifications of that are, which is obviously important because I know we've had discussions about other things and, and our policies and procedures and make sure that kids know that there is a ramification for a positive finding. The one thing that we did discuss prior to that is, which is going to be important with our goals and, and, and discussions that we had for a team of eight workshop, is that it was provided to us a sheet discussing the difference between a regulation and a policy. Of course, it's up to us to draft policy, all right? Policy is basically our wish list, is what we want as a board collectively. Now, the regulation, regulation is the implementation of that policy. But the design and the, and the crafting of that is strictly in the hands of the administration. In other words, it can be a, you give us a policy, administration says, okay, this is our regulation. This is how we're going to enforce that policy here. Step one, here's step two, here's step three, here's step four. So that's the difference between, between a policy and a regulation. Now, Chris had asked that everyone receive a copy of, of BA, AE Legal, BAA Legal and BAA Local for our team of eight workshop that we had here previously. Now, what you need to do is when you look at those things, the AE Legal is, is, is the one that's going to impact when we start drafting our goes because we are by, by law in the education code, we have to draft a vision statement, okay? And we have to set comprehensive goes. So those two things are required upon us by law. Now, if you look at BAA Legal, there are 27 mandatory powers that, that we have to implement as, as trustees. If you look at, and there's also discretionary powers, there's 15 of those. So there's 24 mandatory and 15 discretionary, plus there's, there's several that deal with property, acquiring property, selling property, entering into transactions and those kinds of things. So it's a good idea to, you know, just to read those things because it tells us what we're supposed to do, you know, set a budget, you know, adopt a budget, all those things. We, there's some mandatory requirements that we have to take care of every year. And then, of course, the discretionary ones as well. Now, the BAA Local, which is just one paragraph that was, that was adopted by the, by PIGES Board. And the thing that, the thing that Dr. Smith pointed out is that, is that we're responsible for policy making, planning and evaluating. Now, because of the size of our district, there's a lot of, a lot of things that have been delegated to administration that we don't necessarily get involved in on a, you know, month to month basis, especially because we only meet once a month. Part of our discussion had centered upon, centered upon the hiring of administrators and how much, how much say so and how much are we going to be involved in that? Now, I know that Chris mentioned it, I think, I think Rosie mentioned it as well, is that we don't want to get in a situation, and, and I'd like to hear some interview comments about this. We don't want to get in a situation where we're actually micromanaging. First of all, it's not effective. Secondly, it's certainly not efficient with, with the district, the size that we have. For example, obviously, we're, we're going to talk about hiring someone this evening, a couple of folks this evening. We have delegated by policy that responsibility to our superintendent and his administrative staff to put the trust in them to get the best people for the job in those positions. So although we have all of these powers, mandatory powers, and then we can get involved in that, we've delegated that responsibility to our administrative team because we, we just, we just can't keep up with that. There's too many things to do and we have to trust our administrative team in making the best choice possible. Now, I did, I did ask Matt if, if maybe we could get a little bit more advanced and notice about those kinds of hires, especially some of these district wide hirings, and to give us more information sooner than later when we're making those kinds of decisions. That's just for our peace of mind and just in case we have any questions about that. But understand that as a, as a board policy in our district, we have delegated that to our superintendent and the superintendent staff. So those are the kinds of things that we discussed. It'd probably be a good idea just to take a, you know, a quick look at those, those 24 powers that are mandatory upon us as trustees and those 15 discretionary powers, plus the ones involving property, which is not going to affect us when we, when we start developing our goes for, we're submitting our goes to, to Matt. I'm assuming, Matt, this is, that's going to be this week that you wanted us to do that, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I, I think that's what, that was basically a summary of our discussion. Chris, you and Rosie have anything to add to that?
I mean, I, I think you hit it, right? I mean, the, the, we don't use regulation a whole lot. And so that was, that was a good education, good conversation. You know, you hit it, it's all about how, how is the policy going to be implemented, right? Yeah, no, I think you did a great job.
And then the other thing that Rosie mentioned was that, I, I don't know how many of you have taken that, that 1566. I, I did the thing last week. And Rosie is right, there, there is a lot of micromanaging kind of things going on in, in, in that particular, that particular policy. So we have to, you know, because we don't necessarily want to do that because we delegate these powers. Although 1566 kind of puts you in a, a spot because they have those, those three goes that they want us to comply with now. And then we're going to implement some other goes once we submit those to, to Matt and Matt drafts those for us. Rosie, you have any comment about that? I know that you, you're the one that had mentioned that previously. Rosie, you there? No?
Okay, there we go. I, I don't have any additional comment. It's overwhelming initially when you're going through everything that they expect, but actually sitting in the policy meeting and, and understanding that we're, we, we will still have the ability to just set policy and that the administration is going to take some of the, well, you know, the, the realistic burden of that and make it doable for our students. I, I thought that was very helpful. So, and I do think, you know, as, as you read over the drug testing policy, it, it was a really nice presentation, perhaps one that should maybe happen in a future board meeting. It just kind of relieved against some of that pressure of making sure that we're thinking through every kid. And it, it was just well done. That was the only other thing I would add.
Fine job with that. Hey, Matt, any, any final comments about, because you're the one that presented that the AE Legal and the BAA Legal to us. And then you mentioned a couple of things about the BAA Local policy. Anything that you want to add on closing?
I think you did it great, Manuel. I think this is, it was, again, I thought a really good example of how a board committee works really well together because we got into good discussion about a regulation, which as you articulated, is an administrative action. But we were able to pick your brains as board members while we're developing guidance for the future. And for the rest of the board and for our community, I need you all to know, I had to go through some education in this. It's my understanding that that drug testing policy was actually written in local policy up until May of last year, I believe. And that it was taken out of local policy about May of last year. And so we've been in a process as an administrative team of making sure we were just clear on the guidance, especially as we are expanding and growing as a school district. So when something's taken out of policy, you have to be clear about what, you know, how you're interpreting policy and what you're sticking to. And I was very thankful for the talk from the policy committee and the input that you all provided. Mike did an exceptional job presenting that. In regards to the goals, Manuel, I think you hit it out of the park. I think you all were totally on that one and we will keep working on that. I think when I hear the Senate Bill 1566 training, to your point, I believe it very well could be overwhelming from a board member perspective because you sit there going, I don't know the ins and the outs of everything that the teachers do and how this is really going to play out. And so our approach of standing, you know, starting really broad with our board and asking you, what do you really want to achieve in early literacy, math and college and career readiness, I think is a way for help, helping us to get your input, to help shape the goals, but to then provide you more detailed information and let you really talk about what targets and how you want to monitor that. So I think we're just in the middle of that process and I appreciate you all participating.
Thank you, sir. Madam President, that's all I have unless anyone else has any comments or questions.
Any comments or questions from the rest of the board? Seeing none again, Manuel, that was well done. Thank you so much for that. Very informative. So the next item on our agenda is a nice report, an update from Mr. Ty Taggart. Talk to us about facilities.
All right, am I off mute? You can hear me now? All right, so in our last meeting last month, we basically had a recap on the moving forward with our $2.1 million in our playground upgrades across the district. Using that Charter Oak example as kind of the, the benchmark, trying to move, move us forward in compliance with ADA things, safety, but just having more cool stuff for our kids to have on their playgrounds. So May, right, this month, right now, Jared's visiting with principals on the districts, getting a plan, kind of where they're going to put things, different logistics. We'll go out to bid in June and then July-ish, sometime in there, sometime between July and August, we'll get started on the construction on this, on the 2.1 million on the playground equipment. Just an update, we always get a cool update from David Bennett on, on the list, the colored list that I love so much. And just a few of the highlights that we had finished last month was the baseball lights. I think it was about $180,000 that we spent on our baseball field. My son played baseball there, was a catcher, and it was dangerous, how dim lit that facility was for so long. So I'm really proud of that. The renovation of our fieldhouse, they gutted it and, and just kind of putting a Band-Aid on it for right now, but that's moving forward. I don't know if y'all can see this, but this is a picture of air conditioner in one of the elementary gyms. I believe that Southwest, I believe that right there is Miller Heights. During the COVID, on my Sunday afternoons, we'd load up in the truck and drive. I did, one day I did every campus in Belton ISD, just driving around looking at things. I guess this facility, now I'm taking it pretty serious. But I got to get the pictures. So all three air conditioners are up and running in our elementary, so I'm really proud of that. Can't wait to get our kids back over there in those gyms in the fall when they really do need it. Something else that is on the list coming forward this summer, they're, and they may already be getting started. David Bennett, we'll find out on Wednesday at our next meeting. But we're going to gut Southwest Elementary and we're going to do a big time renovation on that campus that's really needed. Also, Coach Skidmore is going to go into Belton High School. They're going to repaint the gym, we're going to liven the colors in the gym, get some graphics on the doors and the walls, you know, where they put those pictures on, the, the graphics and things. Really get a, a nice upgrade to our Belton High School gym. And we talked a little bit about our, our, our capital improvements list. And we kind of semi, I guess we've had so much change over the last year and a half with leadership, with board members, things like that. It's really time for us to kind of get that list back out and kind of reprioritize things now that Matt's on board. The, the board looks a little bit different. I think a lot of the projects are going to still be there, but I think that we're going to need to get in there and kind of reshuffle the prioritization of these lists. So, but we kind of decided in the last meeting to kind of take that one item off the list, tearing down the old gym. We really need it from a space standpoint. It's a really good storage facility for us. There's also some abatement issues with asbestos in those old buildings. Whenever you go in there messing with them, there's a, a lot of regulations involved, very, very expensive. And then really, it's not a kid-based project, honestly. So it really, that's kind of what we decided on that deal maybe. And I, I don't know if we need to take action on that at some point. And that was kind of the last meeting. We have another meeting coming up this Wednesday. Basically, the main thing is, is going to be the, the reprioritization of our capital improvements list. And I, I, you know, in our last budget workshop that we had a couple of weeks ago with Jennifer Land, our CFO, she talked about some of the monies that we're going to have left over from the 2017 bond based on our investments, the money that we made on some interest. We did a great job of spending the money that was allocated to those projects. We were also afforded some additions once we got into the Lake Belton High School, seeing that we needed to make some changes, some improvements. As we went along, we put some change orders in on that, but we're coming right on budget really good. But we're going to have a pretty good little chunk of money where we really need to look at these capital improvements and reshuffle the deck, seeing what we can afford now versus what needs to be put maybe on the future as far as a bond projection type thing. I noticed in the agenda of the packet that there's an old, I think 2015 packet where O'Connell Robertson went in and looking at our swim facility. And they did an unbelievably in-depth study on our swim facility. And there's a lot of different price points because Coach Henry had some really big dreams and some really cool plans. So, you know, looking at a dive, you know, pool and maybe converting the current pool into an outside while they're building a new inside. So there's a lot of different ways to look at the swim thing, but it's in the packet. So I know that's a priority for us because it services so many people in our community from our little bitty tiger sharks all the way up through our senior citizens in, in Belton. It's a huge deal to our community. So that's on our next list. And then you remember in our last board meeting last month, we, Templeton gave us the demography report. We're going to kind of drill that down a little bit more, have a review on that. Then Jennifer's going to talk to us a little bit about some of the savings that we have from our old bonds, how we've been spending. Then she's going to get into some legislative issues about, you know, what we can and can't spend it on, things like that. That we'll kind of get into that. And that's pretty much, I, I think at this point, that's pretty much all I've got for the facilities report.
Nicely done. Anybody have any discussions or comments?
Yeah, I'll just add a little bit, you know, that it's been really fun to work on facilities. And it's also, it's really amazing to watch our staff and David Bennett, you know, so excited to get to do those projects as well. And, and the excitement is to get to watch the teachers and the kids be able to benefit from all the improvements. And, and it's super rewarding, you know, as a board member to be able to watch it. And I know that Ty is particularly proud of, of his ACs in the gym because that, that was a big deal to him and is a big deal to those kids. And I, you know, not, you know, it's not, everybody knows that some of those campuses don't get to have PE when fall comes because it's too hot in the gyms. And so they have to stay in their classrooms. And now they'll get to have PE and every campus will be equitable. And it's just, that kind of stuff is very, very rewarding.
One more thing, Sue, I forgot to mention, it's on my list, I skipped over it. Lake Belton High School, we are 93, 95% complete on that campus, somewhere in that range. We're basically in the punch out stage on most of the construction part. I think I saw Jill Ross posted today pictures of boxes of furniture, furniture's being delivered. I know that's amazing. Guys, what our purchasing people have done over the last year, plus getting all of the, it is amazing the number of things that they had to purchase to get and open up a new campus. But we are really, really close to them turning that campus over to us. I've walked it two of the last four Sundays, took the kids out there and we just get our steps in. It's an amazing, it's amazing facility. And our orchestra, one of the benefits, the, the few benefits of, of the COVID thing was they were able to get started on the inside project, obviously without kids being in there. So we're ahead of schedule on our orchestra addition and it's coming along nicely. They planted some trees, they've got some sidewalks and stuff out there. And it's coming along nicely. They planted some trees, they've got sidewalks and stuff out there going. I was up there today dropping off choir stuff with my youngest and I could see they've, the courtyard looks really, really nice. They've got new sidewalks, the drive-around space is nice. So I forgot to mention, those projects are getting really, really close for them turning that stuff over to us. And that's all we got.
Thank you, Mr. Taggart. That was a great report. Your excitement is so palpable. I just, I just wanna go, oh, that's exciting, that's exciting. I could just, I envisioned being in that vehicle with you as you're going campus to campus and watching all those things happen. That's so exciting. Thank you so much for just being the chair that you are. And Janet, I use, you know, the cheerleader that you are, thank you for, you know, in making sure that we keep up that momentum because it is exciting. It's definitely exciting seeing all these things happen. It's gonna be even more exciting once we get to completion on some of those things and our kiddos are back and enjoying those. I'm very excited about it too. So thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does any member of the board wish to have any item pulled for further discussion? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve as stated? We've got a motion from Mr. Taggart. I've got a second from, I'm sorry, I missed it, from Mr. Norwood. All in favor, please raise your hand. That is everyone. That passes unanimously. And so now we will move on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Smith, you'll get us started.
If we can go ahead and project, we will get rolling on this. Obviously, in the superintendent's report, we will cover the things that we are obviously working with with COVID, but I wanted to make sure that we spent a little bit of time just talking through some of the goals again that we had set out. Next slide, please. For the investment, so when I was hired in here in the Belton ISD, I promised y'all that I would invest in our community and I would invest in our schools. And so there were five goals that I've laid out for you and I'm using most of these goals as a guide for my actions through the spring, even though the spring looks a little different than I had initially planned. Next slide. So over the last month since I presented to you last, we've been continuing to work on a few things and I want to highlight those things here. First, under the goal, one, talking about student voice. One of the things that I hope you've seen through our time so far together is that we are working to engage students and give students some voice in what their experiences should look like here in Belton ISD. We kicked that off by asking them their thoughts on graduation and sending a thought exchange out to the seniors. We have continued that by doing those Zoom meetings with some of our students and gathering their voice and what their experience has been. Through all of this, we want them to help us shape what we do here because ultimately they are our customers in all of this and they're the ones we should be focused on each and every day. The next part there is a quote, and I wanted to share that with you. That's something that I'm using with our administrative team on a regular basis. I know that a lot of people wonder what student experiences look like in this upcoming world that we can't predict right now. We never would have predicted a closure for COVID and we don't know exactly what the future might hold. But our job right now is to figure out how to create exceptional student learning experiences for each and every student, each and every day, no matter what. So regardless of the format that we're learning in coming up, regardless of whether we're face-to-face or not, our job is to make sure we're planning through things to create just world-class learning experiences for kids. And so we are working through that and talking through that on a regular basis. And our events, one of the things that I mentioned last month that I think is important to point out is the student experience goes far beyond a learning in a classroom or a lesson in a classroom. It is really also about a lot of those experiences that kids have throughout their high school career, through their middle school career and through their elementary school career. It goes beyond the classroom walls and to those events that are held. And so we have those things and we're doing our best to recreate those things with an eye on what can be memorable and supportive for students through this uncertain time that they've been faced with. I have been in Genesee Online again tonight. If y'all have any questions, we can pause real quickly here, but we've been working extremely hard to make sure that all of these experiences that we're providing for kids, while they can't take the place of what they anticipated in the past, I'm really, really proud of what I'm seeing for our kids right now. When I go to the athletic banquets and I see them celebrate our kids, it's projected up on the side of a movie theater here and seeing how our community comes together to celebrate those kids, it's pretty amazing to me. Do y'all have any question about student events or thoughts about student events that you would like to ask with Ben and Genesee along the way here?
Just real quick, you know, I don't know what all the graduation details will look like. But if there is any way that the board can be involved, we would, we would love to. And, you know, even if it's not the traditional way, you know, we're here and we're, we're willing to help them pitch in as much as we can.
Yeah, I think that we're gonna be reaching out to you and picking your brains on that. And I wanted to address real quickly on the timeline of graduation. I know that you'll see and hear some graduations taking place at the end of May, some taking place in June and, you know, some taking place in the early, that first week in June. Our thought process on having it that June, on June eighteenth was it gives us a little bit of time to also see what kind of restrictions may be eased in all of this and what all we can plan out. So it's not too late in the summer where we felt like we would lose a lot of people in their interest. But it is, does give us a little bit of a window of time to be able to plan effectively for, you know, is normally graduation as we possibly can provide, we'll put it that way. But I do wanna just applaud Ben and Genesee and their leadership and it's just been phenomenal watching our leaders pull together and focus on our kids through all of these events. And I would be remiss if I didn't also applaud our elementary principals, middle school principals as well. Because some of these things that you're seeing throughout our system, I think a lot of people just take for granted because it's part of the Big Red Community and y'all know how much this, this school system cares about kids. But I can tell you, it's not that way in every other district and there's some phenomenal things going on for kids in these events that are being held right now.
Yeah.
What are our numbers for, I'm sorry, Janet, go ahead.
Oh, well, I was just gonna say, I've heard nothing but positive comments about the plans coming up. The community is happy, the kids are happy, you know, and parents, I know so many parents of seniors this year and they're just thrilled, absolutely thrilled. So thank you for just like honoring them and wanting to do what's best and listening to their voices and, and doing the best that you can possibly do under these circumstances. Cause I know it wasn't easy and you had to put in a lot of effort to make this happen and I'm just really grateful. I'm grateful as a board member because also the heat doesn't come back down on us. But y'all, y'all did great. You did a good job.
As a parent of a senior, I'm grateful as well. Just wondering what our numbers are for New Tech and Belton High School. How many graduates do we have this time?
So at New Tech, we have a hundred and seventeen graduating seniors.
At Belton High School, we have, our numbers are still going up. We have seniors that are working hard up to the last minute. So right now, we've got seven hundred and three that are in the graduating class, but we have seven hundred and twenty-five that will be graduating. That had some students that Delta students and some students that were behind in credits but are working towards that. And so we're really happy. Our counselors and assistant principals have been working really hard with those students to ensure that they, they receive a diploma as well. So still a work in progress.
That's great. Thank you.
I've got one thing real quick. Obviously, y'all know I've got a senior and it's been an interesting roller coaster of emotions here, but I want to applaud our leadership team and Ben and Genesee especially because we got out in front of this. And when you started seeing the results coming in from local and state, you know, all around and seeing how other people were handling this, this plan to us seemed on the edge, the cutting edge of what the most we could possibly do for our kids and their families involved. I'm gonna have to be honest with you, the most special moment of my three years on the board was when I got to hand my oldest his diploma. And I think that's a rare thing that, that board members get to do and some administrators get to do. But you know what, this year, because of COVID, all these parents and their significant others and the people that have gotten through their life, whoever that may be, they're gonna get to hand that kid a diploma and I, I can tell you how much that means. So yes, we've had so many awful things because of this COVID thing, but there are some really cool things that have come through this. And I thought that was such a great idea, guys, that y'all did that. Y'all could have done it a lot easier way of, out of it, but I'll applaud y'all for that decision. It's gonna mean a lot and those kids will never forget that, ever.
I've already got all my items to decorate the car that Dylan will be delivering in. So we're excited, excited, very excited.
I would just like to add too, Elizabeth Cox and Mike Morgan, along with Matt, I mean, we, we've all worked hand in hand closely together and none of the things that we could have done would have been possible without Elizabeth and her communications team and Mike Morgan. I just, it's been awesome working with them through this and we've got some incredible leaders at the district office as well. So I want to brag on them too.
Thanks, Ben. I, I do want to say, and you can go ahead and project the presentation again, if you would please. I do want to say Ben's leadership, Genesee's leadership, Mike, Elizabeth, the whole team has been outstanding. But one of the other things that I've really been impressed with is their thoughtfulness in the plans because I think I've seen some districts rush out to get plans out there and they haven't thought things through. And then I've seen other districts who have waited too long to get things out there and the community gets frustrated. But the timing of this group and their dedication on really focusing on what's right for kids, they've just done a phenomenal job and I'm honored to work with them. I think so. We're up to the second part here. Can we go ahead and put that presentation back up? Second one, going into our board partnership, obviously we worked on our team of eight training and talking about goal setting. We'll continue working through that and we're working through ongoing communication refinement. Manuel said something earlier in the policy committee update that I wanted to reiterate on this is that and he talked about timing of communication. One of the things that I think is most important is it is an administrative team. Our job is to get the board of trustees the right information in a timely way so that you can act in an appropriate manner for the board when you need to. And so we're continuing to work on our communication practices and we will continue working as a team of eight to figure out what's gonna best meet the board's needs and our administrative team will keep working on that. So your feedback along the spring has been great so far. I appreciate Manuel talking to me a little bit about that and we'll keep working on some of those things. Community engagement, goal three. Last week I had the honor of sitting in with a Belton Chamber event with Hugh Shine early in the morning and you talking to us a little bit about what he's seeing legislatively coming, coming around the corner. Have a Temple Rotary event coming up this week. Prepare a Temple Business League report. So I'm trying to make sure in all of this that in my investments go beyond what we do in our school setting, but also in some of the settings that are out in the community as well. And then finally, in community engagement, the thought exchange that's out there right now, this goes back to what I mentioned a minute ago about thoughtful planning and timing and all of this. Is we start talking about what next year could look like, would look like, should look like. We thought it was really wise to go out and get some feedback from the community and I have to applaud Elizabeth and her team for helping to get that going. But there are so many variables in all this that we thought asking our parents, asking our community, what should be some of our priorities would help us make good informed decisions as we're putting plans together. So that community engagement about what our plan might be in the fall, I think is gonna help us be successful as well. Team development in BISD, obviously we're continuing to work on a few things. And I want to highlight just one of these right now is leading and managing change discussion. So as we continue to work as a leadership team and we'll work with principals every week and our senior leadership team here in Belton ISD every week, we're really talking about what it looks like to lead and manage change effectively. No matter what, the thing that we can predict is that we're gonna have some change in our normal operating procedures because of COVID nineteen. We don't know exactly what that looks like yet, but we know as leaders, our job is to help lead that effectively and manage things effectively so that our students, our staff, our community can tolerate the changes that we may be faced with. And so we're continuing to work and learn together about what leading and managing change looks like as we move forward into some of the unknown things coming up. And then finally, effective transition, this is the goal I left about last month, but it was to create a seamless and, and the least disruptive transition as possible. And as I said, I was here for ten days and there was a lot of disruption and I, no matter what anybody says, I didn't bring it, I promise. And I, but I just, I'm thankful for such a great leadership team. We are, I don't, I don't think that people always realize this, but we are conducting business as usual right now. Like student learning is still going on. Device collection and uniform collection and all these things are still going on. And while everybody views as school being closed, the normal business on a day-to-day basis is still happening. Yes, it looks different, but there is a lot that is moving on a regular basis and the leadership team here has been phenomenal in their efforts to keep that regular business conducted. And then finally, I'm, as you all know, I'm reaching out to schools and picking brains and departments and picking brains about what's going well. Just overall, what do I need to know? It's a new superintendent going in. And it's been wonderful hearing that feedback. So that's my focus on my investment plan actions of the last month. Next slide, please. Wanted to give you a brief status on COVID nineteen items that are happening. As you all know, the governor has closed schools for the remainder of the school year in the state of Texas. What that means for us here in Belton ISD is our facilities are still closed. That means we are not bringing groups in to meet and hold meetings and stuff in our facilities right now. We feel like if the facilities are closed for our students, we gotta be thoughtful about our staff as well. Normal business continues, as I mentioned just before, but through the remainder of the month of May, our buildings will remain closed. Staff is being phased in slowly at this time. We did have a few staff groups that began working back on May the eighteenth. Todd and Robert Mueller have done an exceptional job getting those groups back together. We are talking through when the other phases of staff coming in would be. And I wanted to point this out, you will hear some other staff, some other districts having staff come in at different times. I support those districts fully because they're making the best decision for their school district and I applaud them for doing that. I will say this, that I don't see a reason for us to hurry staff back to get face-to-face in all of this if we are concluding the school year right now and students are getting their needs met. We don't have to bring everybody back face-to-face in the month of June. In fact, we're talking about July sixth being a key return date for us for those on a two hundred and twenty-six day contract. And the reason being in that is we will continue doing business just like we're doing now and close out the school year and make sure that everybody is well taken care of. But as far as bringing people back face-to-face, other districts are having a little more aggressive approach in that. Our approach is being prioritizing the safety of our staff and our students. And we believe that July sixth is probably a good target date for some of those groups. Key, or excuse me, learning continues as we close out the school year. So it's been hard to keep everybody focused on student learning and all of this. There are a lot of moving parts. But I am really proud to say a couple, I'll give you a little bit of information on a couple of things. We have served twelve thousand two hundred and eighty-one students with learning experiences this, this spring through this closure. That's four hundred and ten print packets that were delivered from our leadership team here at the central office, our curriculum team, in order to help engage kids in learning. And obviously all of the online learning experience as well. Throughout this whole experience, we had forty elementary and middle school students that we were having a hard time reaching. We sent them a certified letter. We've made numerous attempts to reach out to them. Because of that last wave of certified letters, we are down to twenty at the elementary and middle school level where we're still working to engage them. At the high school level, we had forty-one students that we were having a hard time engaging in learning experiences. And after that letter, we are down to thirty-five. Our team will continue to keep working through whatever means necessary to engage students in these learning experiences. But I wanted to applaud our team a little bit for thinking through learning experiences for twelve thousand students. And if we're down to thirty-five at the high school level and twenty for the elementary and middle school levels, I'm extremely proud of the work our team has done to engage the kids and provide them great learning experiences during this time. Key student events, Ben and Genesee have given you an update on this. Obviously, we are doing our best to hold events that are safe and focused on the safety of our community, but also that really recognize our kids. And I've been extremely excited about doing those and attending some of those. Our teams are working through planning for a lot of our summer learning and that includes- Our teams are working through planning for a lot of our summer learning, and that includes our student learning and staff learning. As you all know, the summertime, a lot of people think that everybody has it off, but we do host summer school, and we do have a lot of training that's involved for a lot of teachers during the summer months. This year will be an interesting situation because we are working on learning that helps support our staff in an unknown future. And so that learning over the summer, Deanna and her team have done a phenomenal job putting together a whole host of opportunities to learn, and a lot of it has to do with virtual learning environments and stuff, and how do we plan effectively for supporting people given the unknowns of the future. March 17th, 2020 resolution information, I'm going to let Todd and Jennifer Land jump in if they have any updates on this. But as you all know, a couple of the big pieces of this were really focused on waivers, we're focused on premium pay, and we're focused on leave for our staff. So I'll turn it over to Todd and Jennifer to update you on any actions we've taken over the last month regarding that would be as a result of that resolution on March the 17th.
I can start out, that's with the premium pay. So as we return this group, these groups of employees back, in particular, employees in support services departments, that premium pays. Really, right now, food service workers are the only ones actually receiving premium, with maybe a couple of others. That is, premium pay is kind of dwindling down in terms of group support.
So, good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Smith. So in the terms of what we've expended for the items that you approved in the resolution, as of Friday, we had, we have expended about $150,000, with a third of that going toward supplies. And in aggregate, half of that $150,000 has been directed toward our school nutrition providing meals with the premium pay as well as the cost of the food itself and the supplies associated with that. So we are anticipating some additional expenditures once the May payroll hits, and we'll have that information for you next month.
One other thing I want to point out in all of this is that there's some waivers, waivers that you just approved on the consent agenda item. So one of the things that if you, is if anyone has explored the guidance from TEA that we're all getting on a regular basis as school districts is there are probably thousands at this point of documents and process pieces that we are working through as school districts to try and meet deadlines and requirements, but that TEA and the state have given us a little bit of flexibility on. So when you see some of these waivers and things that are related to COVID, that's exactly why. And we will do our best to make sure that in every one of those that you're notified through board agendas, et cetera. But our team is sorting through all of the waivers and all of the logistics of all of this, and I assume you will see more and more of this as we continue through the summer months, unfortunately. Just as, is, we're sorting through all of those requirements that we need to meet. If I could project again, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Jennifer, thank you, Todd.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, we need, I have one more slide to go. Next slide, please. Is there our next steps and key planning items that I need y'all to know about? First of all, planning for August and what the beginning of the year looks like. I want to be really clear with our trustees and with our community that we are planning to open school. We, right now, want to see kids face-to-face, and we are doing our best to plan for that. We also need to plan for multiple scenarios, though, because we don't know how this is going to unfold. And so our team is going through, I think Deanna talked instructionally the other day about seven different scenarios that we're working through right now. It is really a continuum of things that we don't know how it's all going to play out. It could be that we're able to open up school and bring everybody back, but it could be also in flu season that we see a resurgence in COVID, and we have to ramp up online learning activities again. We are planning through as many of those scenarios as we possibly can for the beginning of the year. But I wanted to make sure our community heard when we're talking about, when they're wondering about what we're planning for in the August, our hope is that we are face-to-face, and we see kids face-to-face, and our staff is face-to-face. Yes, we are obviously planning for multiple different scenarios that might play out, but that is definitely our hope. Calendar thoughts, calendar has gained a lot of traction in media lately, thanks to TEA discussing this a couple of weeks ago. Now, it's a week and a half ago, I guess now. And some districts are talking about changing their school calendars in this, during these summer months for the upcoming school year. While I will never say never, I will tell you that I would go very slow in talking about that or bringing anything to you as a Board of Trustees about that. Y'all approved a calendar back in January that I believe our community is focused on and counting on. And so when we talk about families being able to actually count on something for their job and for their financial stability and for their home stability, the school calendar is one of those things that's important in all of this. I think there are some districts out there that are rushing to create things like intercessional calendars because they, we don't know what the future might look like. And I need to say, I taught on an intercessional calendar early in my teaching career, I have nothing against it. It is a calendar where, you know, a longer break in the fall, a longer break in the winter, and a longer break in the spring, and it's spread out a little more during the year, and there are some benefits to those things. But what I wanted you as trustees to know is that I'm not hurrying to adopt and present to you to adopt anything that is different from the calendar that you have already approved at this time. We will always listen and explore options that we feel like are going to be best for kids. But when it comes to changing a calendar for a community, I think there's a lot of things that the community needs to engage in and discuss, and we would go slower and engage those people and discuss this in more detail before acting on it. So I wanted to make sure you all know, as you hear this, you don't expect anything from me out of the blue on this one. I think there would be, have to be a lot of discussion about changing a school calendar before we pursued anything. Third bullet is studying options to increase the density of devices for kids. As we're planning for these contingency learning experiences that we don't know might play out in the fall, we do have to talk a little bit about potentially seeing what it would take to increase the density of devices for our elementary students. What we know right now is we have one-to-one at our secondary level, but not every elementary student has a device like a laptop or a Chromebook to be able to engage in learning in right now. And so we are thoughtfully looking into this to see what we might need to invest in in the future, and we'll continue to do that. I bring that up also because I think that there are a growing number of questions from a lot of people about how many parents will actually send their kids back into unknown situations. And so we have to be able to be thoughtful about that as well, and TEA has said that they will be providing relief for school districts. So it's not all physical attendance, so that there might be some virtual attendance relief for us so that students can engage in learning experiences from their home if need be. We'll continue to wait for guidance from TEA on that, but again, this, that's a pretty big deal when we're talking about families, and they may refuse to send their kids to school, and then what would we do as a school district about that? So that density of devices is heavy on our mind there. Professional learning needs and plans I mentioned before, and leading and managing change I mentioned before, these are the key areas that we're working on as a leadership team as we are doing our best to plan for kind of an unknown future. But final point I want to stress in all of this is how thankful I am for the team in Belt and ISD. As you all have mentioned before, the team goes beyond the administrative team and goes into the teachers and the staff and the community, and there has been nothing but support, and I am extremely thankful as a new superintendent in this role for the big red community and how much they've supported our kids and our, our learning experiences during this time. So that concludes the superintendent's report, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Does anybody have any comments or any questions? Seeing that, I will just, again, thank you for all of those reported, reported items. I will especially speak on the various ways that the district and the teachers have come up with reaching the students. I've heard folks talk about in other districts how they didn't feel like their, their students were being connected with. But here in BISD, we're definitely connecting, whether it be a bit emoji or whatever that method's going to be. We are definitely reaching our kids, and the numbers that you shared with us earlier is proof positive of that, so thank you for that.
I should say one quick thank you to our technology department, too. And as you all know, we stood up some hotspots at different schools and stuff, again, just to engage students. We created a technology helpline, we swap devices in and out for kids, so our technology department has been instrumental in that area, too, so thank you for that.
Kudos to them as well. Okay, moving on to our next item, if there's nothing further there. Our next item on the agenda, I saw Kurt and I saw Jared, they're going to come talk to us about new construction projects and give us that update.
That's right. Good evening, everyone. Everyone doing well? Great to hear the reports coming along, and we're excited, a great time for us here at the facility side as well. So you'll see the Lake Belton High School is nearing completion. Right now, the contractor is at about 95% build, and then at Belton Orchestra, they're at about 70% build. But as you can see, just the progress, they're, they're a little bit behind on billing, but well ahead on progress, so they have taken advantage of the time. I am going to turn it over to Kurt here to run through the details of everything, and we'll look forward to any questions that y'all have.
Thank you, Jared. Good to speak to you with all of you again. If we could go to the next slide. Lake Belton High School, just wanted to kind of recap at the beginning, you know, it's been 20 some months. I'm a little sad that we're getting to the end of the project, happy for you all, but sad that I won't be out there all the time. But the project's approximately 400,000 square feet of building, and we have approximately 80 acres of site that we've been working on. If we could go to the next slide. So previously, we kind of showed you some of those exterior finished shots that were on the athletics, the gym, and the south side of the building. When we look at the main overall aerial, we saw, you know, parking lots were being put in, they were beginning to put the trees in, and they're really just getting into the landscaping of the building. In the meantime, they've continued in that, and if we go to the next slide. So we've got the football stadium, they had all the turf done, they had it done at the baseball and softball, they've got some touch-up items to do on there, and they had been working on the track surfacing that had been going down. And in this photo, you can kind of see that the track surfing thing has been completed, and they're just waiting to start the striping on it. And once they do that, the football stadium will basically be complete. We haven't punched any of it out yet, but it's almost there. I know I've heard there have been some kids that have been around on the site and on the weekends and stuff, and they're really excited about being out there. So hopefully, that won't continue very much longer. Now, the next slide, please. So just kind of giving you an overview of a couple of the areas. On the south side of the building, outside of the dining commons, we have the south courtyard. And in this photo, all the planting's been done, they've got all the rock walls, and so it's basically ready for the grass to go in and students to be out there. I mean, that dining space, if you see it, and when you do see it in the next, probably in the next board update, I'll show some photos, it's going to be a great extension of the indoor dining area, commons area, being able to go to this outside area. There's a little serving window out there that kids are going to be eating at, and I can see that this is going to be a fun space for a lot of students to be at. In the top right-hand side, we've got some of the graphics that have been going up on the Performing Arts Center. So this is coming in on that west entrance, and you go in, on the south side, you have the gymnasium, and on this north side is that Performing Arts Center, the ticket windows and all these graphics that gone in, and they're actually getting ready to do the horseshoes that will be, if you see on the, that top photo, those little squares that go down there are the horseshoes that will lead into the building on this side. On the bottom left-hand side, we've got the practice field and the baseball. They've been establishing the grass in the practice field, and they've also striped both the band parking lot and all the parking lots, so it is ready for bands to get out there and start practicing for the season next year. In the bottom right-hand corner is just a view of the competition gym where we have all the graphics on the bleachers, all the paint on the actual hardwood has been done, and we've got the Broncos logo up next to the scoreboard on the right side of the image. Next slide, please. So in this update, we don't have any allowances or changes to discuss. It's been going good, and so we're, as Jared said, you know, we're almost to the end of this project. Like I said, I'm a little sad, we've got about two more months, I would assume, of board updates because as the furniture's gone in on the education side, I've been punching out the athletic side and the band and the orchestra, and we'll be wrapping that up in about the next three weeks, and then I'll be moving to those exterior buildings and just finishing those up, and you guys will be ready to take over. Are there any questions?
I do have one question. First of all, Jared, is that background behind you something pretty familiar to us there, maybe?
Quite possibly, I might be standing in front of Lake Belton High School.
You are, that's the front, yeah, that's cool. Hey, and also, I was out walking the campus the other day, and on the south side of the campus, when you're leaving the courtyard, going down a rock wall, going down towards the CTE, you know, down that way, going out towards the greenhouse right there, there's an area right when you get past the brick wall where you see down into the bay where the sliding doors and stuff are where CTE is there. And I noticed there's not a sidewalk there from one sidewalk down into that, that area, have y'all ever talked about that?
So that would be going across the bus loop, I believe, is what that is there, that you're looking at. I don't believe we've looked at a sidewalk at this point, Jared.
I'd have to look at the specifics, I am pulling up the plans to get a sense of where you're talking about, but we can definitely look at that.
It just seemed maybe from an ADA standpoint, if they're going to let the kids when their, when lunch is over or in between classes, if they're going to get to go down that south side of campus down into the CTE area in that backside on the south side, maybe that a sidewalk there might be a good idea, I just thought, you know, just.
Yeah, we'll double-check and make sure that there, there's access there. From what I'm seeing, there is access that would get you from that courtyard into the CTE, so they may just not afford it yet, but we'll confirm that.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Anyone else? Nope. Well, thanks, guys, really appreciate that update.
And now the orchestra project, next slide.
Awesome.
All right, Belton Orchestra, like they talked about earlier, it's coming along great with the school being let out a little bit early. They were able to get into the phase three of this project and start moving quite quickly. So if we can go to the next slide. General photos, you know, that the Belton B and the Belton High School at the canopy. In all those photos, you see all the construction fencing, which I was told was already removed from it, so the main entrance has been opened up. And all the work that's going on right now is in that phase three area. So if we go to the next slide. Basically, we have three different things here, on the left hand of the side is we had a certification company came out and tested all the windows for both water and air infiltration, and we had some great results out of all those. And then you also see the red panel behind them on that photo, which is leading into the find, or the orchestra and band area. The middle photo is they were finishing the drywall, and these are in those offices that are between the, the band room and the orchestra room. We've got two offices, a music library and the storage area. And so right now, they've been finishing all those up, taping and floating and getting ready to be able to drop a lay-in ceiling in there, and they are moving quite quickly. The one thing that will, while the project will be mostly complete before the schedule, the actual casework for some of the band instruments is still going to be coming in on the original scheduled timeframe. And then on the outside of the building, like you guys had talked about earlier, is planting went in, and it's beginning to look like a finished building out there. There's really not much else you'll be able to see on the outside, everything is going to be on the inside. Once they take down the barrier in the existing band room and clean it all up, it's going to be one fine facility. Are there any questions?
See you, no-takers. Looks great, guys, thank you all so much for that report.
Thank you.
I see Ty if there's clapping his hands. And so in my enthusiasm to run right over to facility reports, I skipped all over the human resources. So we're going to slide back up and go over there and talk to, we're going to talk to Dr. Smith first, and then he'll turn it over to Todd Schuler. We'll talk about the employment of administrative employees. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, ma'am. I wanted to. Thank you, ma'am. I wanted to just say real quickly, I need to tell a quick story. And I apologize if you all humor me just for a minute, but I think it was probably my second or third day on the job when I met with Robert Mueller. And Robert said, by the way, my last day is at the end of the month. Now, mind you, this was about February 26th. And when I met with him and, you know, February is a short month. And Robert graciously at that time agreed to stay on is I transitioned into the role. And we had no idea at that time that COVID would look like it looked. And so throughout the spring, Robert has graciously helped us and dedicated his time to Belton ISD. His leadership has been just a wonderful support and a thoughtful, kind, student-focused leader. Has done great work for Belton ISD and I'm extremely thankful for him during this time. I also realized about a month or so ago that I've never met his wife, but if I wanted to stay in her good graces, I should probably let him retire sometime. And so Robert and I talked a little bit about that. And so Robert will be retiring here at the end of June from his work in Belton ISD. And so we've been through a process over the last month to hire someone to replace Robert. And Robert's dedication to kids has been phenomenal in all of this. So we were really looking to find a leader who had a broad range of experiences that has a heart for kids and a heart for doing what's right and just outstanding leadership skills. And we are extremely, extremely excited to announce tonight that we are recommending Dr. Melinda Golden is the next deputy superintendent in Belton ISD. And I'll let Todd tell a little bit about Melinda and then we'll go from there.
All right. So yeah, we're excited about when the goal, Dr. Golden joining us. She has a doctorate from University of Texas at Boston, master's of education from Texas State University and bachelor's degree from Texas A&amp;M University. Melinda has 30 years of education. She's worked as a teacher, an associate and assistant principal, a principal, director of leadership development, executive director of professional development, senior executive director for school improvement, and assistant superintendent and deputy superintendent. She comes to us from Georgetown ISD where she served as assistant superintendent.
Okay, Mr. Schiller, I believe you ended. There was a little bit of an audio issue. Do you have other employees you want to tell us about before we take any action?
You have one other recommendation. It's Peter Baumgart for assistant principal at Belton Middle School. He comes to us with 10 years of experience, has a master's degree from Concordia and University of Notre Dame, and has a bachelor's degree.
Good deal. Well, we'll take some action and then we'll circle back and ask Dr. Golden if she'd like to have remarks. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the presentation as presented for these employees. Is there a motion? I see Mr. Norwood. Is there a second? See Ms. Lee. All in favor, please raise your hand. That is all of us unanimously. Dr. Golden, would you like to have a few remarks and welcome aboard?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to say thank you. I, I know that Belton has a proud tradition of excellence and I'm incredibly honored and very blessed that you're inviting me to be a part of this amazing team of teachers and principals and staff serving all of the communities that Belton ISD is, is supporting. And so it's a weird time to come aboard. I know I've been driving around and haven't been able to go into a lot of places. But so I've been stalking you and learning about Belton ISD online. And so I have to tell you what really stands out to me. I mean, I've seen things like students creating quarantine songs and, you know, Flat Stanley-inspired ways that teachers are reaching out to kids and drive-in banquets. And I do have to tell you, I had my husband come and sit and watch the video for the rolling with it for the virtual field day. That was awesome. And so it's very, it's very evident that relationships with students and engaging parents in the community is so important. And so I'm just humbled and honored that you're asking me to join your team. Thank you so much.
Well, welcome aboard. We're excited that you're here. We're excited to see what the future with you looks like. We're excited to see what the future looks like, period. So we're excited.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Les Smith, we're going to move on down to you and let you talk to us about the memorandum of understanding with Tarleton State University regarding the distinguished high school partnership program.
Good evening. I am excited to talk with you tonight about this MOU. It's often that our MRUs are continuing on and you see them usually in consent because they, they're consecutive and we've had them in place. But this is a new MOU. It's with the Tarleton State University and it's an opportunity for our students to graduate in the top 25% of the class to be automatically accepted to Tarleton State University. We're just one year late on for some of you on this request, but this is a new program that Tarleton's offering. It's a great way for our students to just be accepted, not have to, they waive their SAT or their ACT requirements. And it will allow them to still be considered for guaranteed awards that they have. But it's just another opportunity to recognize the hard work of our students in the top 25% of their class. And so with this, we are presenting this MOU tonight. It's one that will actually automatically renew for up to four years. So, so once you consider it tonight, then it should be in place for the next four years of renewal.
Thank you, Dr. Les Smith. Any discussion or question, comments regarding that? Okay, we'll move on with action items then. Is there a motion to approve as recommended? Mr. Flor, there's a second by Dr. Montgomery. All in favor, please raise your hand. We're all there. We're all in favor. That passes unanimously. Mr. Taggart is sharing with us his hat. Charleston, thank you so much.
Thanks for that nice touch. Thank you.
Nice touch. Nicely well done. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is if board requests for new information and/or reports. And that's just that normal area that we would have. If there's anything you all would like to have pool for future meetings. Do y'all have anything? Mr. Taggart, you're shaking your head. If you do, let me know. I'll move over to Mr. Alcozer. Yeah, Mr. Norwood, nothing. Ms. Lee. Okay, Mr. Flor?
Good, thank you.
You're good. Dr. Montgomery? We're all good. Okay. So the next item is calendar events. Y'all were provided that in the news of the week. I will just call out a couple of them. One of the, one fun thing that we're doing is the virtual, the virtual field day that's happening all week. So check and see what you need. I think today was sackcloth ration, race sack, you know, that thing. I didn't do it, obviously, because I'm sitting here. So there are some things going on every day this week, so be sure to check that out. We've got some facilities meeting. Mr. Taggart mentioned that earlier. That's happening on Wednesday of this week. We've got virtual beef recognitions on Thursday, May 21st. Monday is Memorial Day. That's a holiday. And then Monday, June 1st, we've got policy committee meeting at 5:00. And then of course, Thursday, June 18th, we got graduation moving back up to June 15th. That'll be our next regular board meeting. So if there is nothing further, we stand adjourned.